I want to thank everyone for joining us here tonight because you are taking time out from your schedule and I deeply appreciate it. I am Gail Brewer. I am the Manhattan Borough President and in a few minutes, I'll introduce the wonderful people here with me. I do want to thank Hunter College Social Work for providing us with space and City Limit Magazine for live streaming this proceeding. It is livestreamed. We'll also be recording the meeting and we'll post it on our video on our website along with the transcription of the oral testimony. And if you send something in that you don't have it with you, we will also include it. We're very serious about listening to your views on two proposals that would have far-reaching impacts on the future of East Harlem. You know that one is moving through a review process now and the Office of the Manhattan Borough President has an advisory role and will provide an opinion on the proposal. We do spend a lot of time in our office on land use and rezoning, but having been in the City Council for 12 years, as you know, the City Council does have the final say. That's exactly what it is. The first proposal is an application by the Department of City Planning, as you know, to rezone 96 blocks in East Harlem with the aim of spurring new housing development. Affordable to whom is always the question, but affordable? And to create new affordable housing units of various income tiers. The application also proposed the application of mandatory inclusionary housing, as you know. The application is also promoting the creation and preservation, very important, of new job-generating commercial and industrial space in the rezoning. And as somebody who spends a great deal of time supporting mom and pop and owner-operated stores and hates chain stores, I hope you can help us think about those issues. The East Harlem rezoning proposal by the city is in response to the neighborhood plan delivered to the city in February 2016 by the East Harlem Neighborhood Steering Committee. Some of you are on that committee. We were proud to be a project partner in that process convened by Speaker Melissa Martha Burrito and co-led by Community Board Levin and Community Voices Heard. The plan we drafted collaboratively was a steering committee of 21 community partners and diverse, with an inclusive and detailed vision for the neighborhood that has already been instrumental in guiding public investment in East Harlem. There are significant differences between the neighborhood plan and the city's proposed rezoning. Let me make that very clear. There are great differences between the neighborhood plan, which the steering committee came up with, and the city's proposed rezoning, many of which were first identified in joint comments submitted by the steering committee at the public hearing for the draft scope of work. And I think many of us here still have those issues and we're not satisfied with the answers we have received from the city. The second proposal, not as major, is a separate proposed mixed-use development to be built on the full block of East 111th Street between Park and Madison. This is one of the last city-owned parcels of this size in East Harlem. Because of that, I believe that if this proposal moves forward, there needs to be a consensus that the final product enhances and supports local neighborhood needs. From both partners in the neighborhood planning process and from residents throughout the neighborhood, I have heard that there are many concerns and questions about the city's proposal and many which I share. Those of you who know me know that I share them. During the limited time left in our review period in the Borough President's office, we will be working to get answers to your questions and to ours. One factor that we are taking into account is the research on the number of affordable units lost and projected to be lost in East Harlem. I know in Manhattan, over the last decade, just on rent stabilization alone, we've lost almost 150,000 units. That's just in rent stabilization, doesn't include Section 8 or other HUD buildings. This is something that we can all agree is a tremendous issue that needs to be tackled. And regardless of our position on the appropriate strategy, we have to tackle this issue. We cannot lose any more affordable housing from a preservation perspective. I want to make sure to mention that I know that there are attendees that may have individual questions on issues that require immediate help. And we have a constituent office on 125th Street between Amsterdam and Morningside. We're the first Borough President to have a street front, not in a tall building. And then there are staff members from our office here. And we have some agencies here. I want to thank the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs for having a table here, the Tenant Support Unit and staff from HPD. If you have questions about specific individual housing issues, please ask them. If you need translation assistance, be advised that outside of the auditorium, there's a table where you can receive a headset and follow along with simultaneous translation. And a minute Deputy Borough President Alden Benio can be more specific. We have an ASL interpreter for those who are hearing impaired located at the edge of the stage to my left. I also want to thank the Department of City Planning and other city agencies for being here tonight. We have in the Borough President's office until August 2nd to make a recommendation, just so you know. So tonight is an opportunity for all of us here to hear from you about these applications. We really, really do welcome you to have comments and we will have additional testimony. We will take questions up until July 24th, but even later if appropriate. I do thank you all for coming. I want to also thank the Mayor's Office for being here, Representative of Senator Serrano, and a Representative of Assemblymember Rodriguez, all for being here. And now I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Borough President Alden Benio for a few comments.
Gracias. Buenas noches. Simplemente quiero añadir que se necesita el equipo para la traducción en español atrás. Por esa puerta pueden, tienen la mano alzada, pueden buscar el equipo de traducción allá atrás. Gracias.
And now we'll hear from General Counsel Jim Karas.
Thank you. Just the basic ground rules. Each witness will have two minutes to testify. We're going to call three people at a time in the order that people signed in. Ask them to take seats right here. Then if the first person called would get up and speak at the mic and the others remain seated, when that person is done, you know, then the next person gets up and so on. And that's also so we have staff, land use staff, will be taking notes on people's issues. We take these very much into consideration as we draft our recommendation. So we really want to be able to hear what everyone says. The first group of three, Ray Rogers, Lynn Lewis, and Marina Ortiz.
And I'm probably not supposed to say this, but I love the signs. Good evening.
Hi. Oh, okay. My name is Ray Rogers. Is the mic on? I think you can call my name first.
Yeah, go ahead. I told you to make one.
And I understand we have two minutes?
Yep.
Okay, ready to go?
Ready.
All right. Ready to go? Okay. One of the things that has bothered me and I've been to these community board, the community board meetings and I see the anger and the frustration and the fear of so many people who know they're going to be dislocated over these rezoning policies. And people talk about the mayor's policy and the city council policy. I want people to understand, these rezoning policies are not the mayor's and they're not the city councils. They're the Real Estate Board of New York, REBNE. They tell the mayor and the city council what the rezoning policies are going to be. And those policies are about making billionaire bullies and racketeers, which are the people that run REBNE, a lot richer. And a lot of the poor and working-class people, a lot poorer. I want to make that real clear. When my two minutes is up, just tell me, okay? Let's take a look at who's their head up, REBNE. Well, you see a little brochure I've been handing out here. And there's a website on it. Go to it. We did a five-minute animated film on REBNE called Bullies. Five of the people you look at in here are leaders on the Executive Board of REBNE. Tishrin Spire, Rob Spire, he's the one that went out. He should be in jail, okay? He cheated thousands of people out of the rent-stabilized apartments and tried to steal to turn, what was it, the Peter Cooper Village in Stuyvesant Town into expensive condos. That man should be in jail. He's out in Long Island City now. He's got $200 million in tax abatements. I call it corporate welfare to build 18,000 units in these three high-rises. Because of a loophole in the law, 421A law, he's going to keep the 200 million, but there's going to be no affordable apartments in those buildings. It's all here in the brochure. Jed Walentus, the guy that built up Dumbo, he's another crook. I've seen firsthand how he cheated people in rent-stabilized apartments, tried to force them out in Brooklyn at 125 Court Street, and how he wouldn't do repairs. And I saw the terrible working conditions of people in the property. I've got 30 seconds left. Okay, then let's look at a couple more. Again, look at this brochure. I hope you'll read it. Gary Bynett, the man who created the poor doors. So when you had affordable housing, we don't want any blacks, Latinos, or poor whites to go in there with the richer people. No, they got their own poor doors. Thankfully, that was outlawed. Okay? My time? Okay. And then of course, just let me add, Slumlord Daniel Brodsky, let's not leave him out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Lynn Lewis. I'm a resident of El Barrio. I've been living here for 18 years, raised my children here. And Gail, if I can call you Gail, we need your leadership on this because this rezoning has been sold to neighborhoods all over the city as a done deal. A lot of folks don't think there's anything that can be done to stop it, like it's a train, and we need you to stand up for us. El Barrio is already undergoing rampant gentrification. The rezoning is going to exacerbate that and make it worse, both with residential and commercial. Residential rents have doubled over the past 10 years. My own children, both college graduates, could not find an apartment in this neighborhood to live in. And nearly everybody that I know in the neighborhood that I talked to that has children has the same concerns. Because once families are separated, there goes the community. We were told by HPD over a year ago that it was unreasonable to ask for housing to be preserved and created for people making less than 30% of area median income, which is the majority of people here in this neighborhood. How can it be unreasonable for publicly-funded urban renewal to not take into account the people that live in a community? Being told that it's unreasonable and unrealistic is like saying, you don't belong in our new El Barrio. You don't belong in our new New York City. We don't believe that that's how you see things, and we need you to stand up for that. There's alternative models that people in the neighborhood have created. We have an El Barrio Community Land Trust. We've been in negotiations with the city to receive city-owned property. There are many vacant lots that were not included in the East Harlem Neighborhood Plan. There are many, many dilapidated city-owned buildings in this neighborhood that would benefit from being on a community land trust. Thank you.
Lynn, I just want to ask you a couple of questions. First of all, thank you very much. One question is, we're all, I just want to hear a little bit more about some of your preservation ideas because that, to me, is as important as anything that would be forward. So can you just expand just a tiny bit on this issue? Because we are nervous about losing more rent-regulated HUD, HDFC, et cetera.
Yeah, and I share that. I live in a rent-stabilized apartment. That was a failed HDFC and was illegally bought by a landlord who built a high-rise across the street from me on 118 and Second Avenue. So the pressures of gentrification that will be exacerbated by the rezoning are going to make it even harder for people to walk away from somebody saying, here's $50,000 for your apartment. Where the land trust can fit in in terms of preservation is we've been working with the city, I won't say very closely, but engaged with the city to get city-owned buildings that were part of the TIL program, as well as other city programs that aren't in any particular program that have tenants living in them, many of them in horrendous conditions because the buildings were never rehabilitated. So those buildings by themselves are difficult to make financially viable. If you have a 10-unit building, a 15-unit building, whether it's a TIL, or it becomes an HDFC, or whatever program it's in, in 20 years, it's going to need a new boiler. It's going to need a new roof. And the people that live there, if it's an HDFC, have to pay for it. The rising oil costs really harmed a lot of HDFCs. And so bundling multiple buildings together to form a larger-scale co-op through a mutual housing association can achieve economy of scale that a building by itself can't do and can't be viable on its own. So there's very successful models of this down on the Lower East Side, Cooper Square. They've been very helpful in crafting our own plan here. HDFCs that are in distress, and there are many that owe over half a million dollars in water bills and taxes, they can have that debt restructured and HPD will go along with it if they restructure their governance, which could also be, include being on a community land trust.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's hope.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. I was going to make a joke about I've never seen so many suits in East Harlem at one time in one place, but I'm glad a lot of other people have come in since then. So Gail, I prepared my statement for three minutes like we normally get at the community board, so I'm going to take that, three minutes.
Go ahead.
We want your support. We want you to help us save our beloved East Harlem, just like when you fought for your West Side neighborhood back in the day. We want you to join us in objecting to the city's plan to gentrify this community with a middle-class housing plan that does not fit our needs. We're tired of all the "plan-splaining," as Sam Stein so eloquently describes it. We do understand MIH, ZQA, NFAR, but for us, those acronyms stand for Missing in Harlem, Zero Quality Assurance, and Favor All Realtors. We have crunched the numbers, but the math doesn't add up. We have looked at the big picture and we clearly see that it doesn't include us. Just one simple example, 30% AMI means zero new housing for low-income and homeless people here in East Harlem. So even setting aside 20, 25%, it's still zero. Peter Minuet once boasted that he acquired the island of Manhattan by paying off the locals with a few trinkets. And ironically, the city now would have us trade one of the last relatively affordable communities in Manhattan for the promise of a few token apartments. This community was founded as an affordable haven for low-income people. Most of the immigrant groups that settled here elected to leave. But poor black and brown residents today don't really have that privilege. We are the descendants of Seneca Village, people driven from their homes by the developers of Central Park. We are the Puerto Rican diaspora, once again, being exiled by hedge fund companies and US developers. We are Central and South American immigrants seeking sanctuary in this land of opportunity. This city and country was founded on the violent displacement of people of color. We cannot and will not let it happen again. The media likes to call us activists, anyone who opposes rezoning leftist thugs. But you know what's really extreme? Racist rezoning of low-income communities of color. That's what's extreme. 35-story, mostly market-rate skyscrapers all along Third Avenue, that's extreme. Being displaced at the rate of four or even three to one through 20 and 25% set-asides, that's extreme. The mayor recently said he finds people asking for money disconcerting. But you know what's really off-putting? Urban renewal programs, which James Baldwin called Negro Removal, and today we call ethnic cleansing programs, like the ones that are being proposed, that's what's off-putting. Encouraging massive increases in the number of high-priced properties in low-income communities and calling it desegregation, that's off-putting. Losing our cultural legacy and hard-earned voting power, that's off-putting. I am here because Asara taught me that it's our duty to fight for our freedom. It's our duty to win. We must love and support each other. We have nothing to lose but our chains, Gail. I'm here because my mentor Esperanza Maltel, with whom you've worked for many years, taught me that it's about creating possibilities and making the impossible happen. Gail Brewer, you do have the power to just say no to any rezoning. You can help us put an end to this charade. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next three people to come up to the front, Stephen Switzer, Marcel, excuse me, the handwriting's a little hard to read, Negret, and Carla Reyes.
Marcel? What's the first name?
Stephen Switzer, Marcel, I think it's N-E-G-R-E-T, maybe N-E-T, and Carla Reyes.
All right, so Stephen?
If you'd come up, take seats in the front. And then the first, Stephen, can stand at the microphone.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm honored to be here. My attachment to the neighborhood is through Reverend Domingo Vasquez of Friendly Hands Ministry around the corner on 118th Street. And I've been working with him for the last three years. And I've been trying to develop an idea of how to sustain the neighborhood and bring skills to the people in the neighborhood that they can be independent. Last year, I worked on the RFP on East 111th Street. We did the sustainability part of green energy called Passive House. So there's a lot of flack in the neighborhood. You don't need these tremendous big buildings to overshadow everyone. And affordable, like you said, affordable for who? At the same time, I personally believe in divinity, that the land tells you what to do. There's a Little League there for many, many years. It would be a shame to lose it. So I came up with an idea, how to keep what's there and add on to it. I reached out to Eva Moskowitz from Sussex Academy.
Not my favorite, but okay.
Okay, well, in this case, she should be. So she has a school a block away, right?
Yes, I know.
Okay. So she'd be willing to have a high school built on the Park Avenue side that would enable the garden.
I'll take care of it. I'll take care of it.
That would enable the gardens to remain, but instead of four gardens, it would be consolidated into one garden. The Little League field would then be shared with the high school and the Little League would still have access to it, full use. On the Madison Avenue side would be the apartments. So probably 250 apartments. We would need a variance from R7 to R9. And so you would have apartments, either affordable or a mixture, that the note could be paid. The baseball field would remain and the gardens would remain, plus the high school.
Thank you very much. I know that I'm a big public school advocate, but I appreciate everything else you said.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Marcel?
Good evening. My name is Marcel Negret. That's Romanian, but I'm actually Colombian. Anyway. I'm a project manager at the Municipal Arts Society of New York. MAS has a number of concerns that we urge the city to address before we can support the East Harlem rezoning proposal. We are apprehensive about issues specific to East Harlem, including the undercounting of available development sites, potential displacement of local residents, and lack of consideration for shadow impacts and public space needs, as well as other broader matters of long-term affordability and preservation of existing units. Due to time constraints, I will only comment on the sites excluded from the selected projected and potential development sites, but I'll be submitting a full testimony that comments on other issues.
Thank you.
The reasonable worst-case development scenario, which is the framework of the draft environmental impact statement analysis, does not accurately represent the utmost projection of potential development under the zoning proposal and could affect the accurate evaluation of its socioeconomic impacts. The rezoning has 521 multifamily residential buildings that are underbuilt based on current zoning. This brings slight concerns that the rezoning, by increasing the level of density, would put additional redevelopment pressure on these sites. The EIS identifies over 100 projected and potential development sites within the reasonable worst-case development scenario. And this excludes 66% of the aforementioned underbuilt residential buildings. While there might be reasonable arguments for excluding some of these underbuilt multifamily buildings, such as lots with ongoing construction activity, the city's calculation may be underestimating future development facilitated by the rezoning. To provide an accurate analysis of potential residential displacement, MAS recommends that the final EIS be amended to include underbuilt properties with rent-stabilized units as part of the criteria for selecting development sites, or at least provide an alternate analysis that includes these properties in the reasonable worst-case development scenario. As I said, we're submitting a full version of the testimony. We're also making the maps and data sets utilized for this analysis available in our block section at MAS.org. Thank you.
I have questions. I'm a questioner.
Yes.
So my question is, first of all, MAS, thank you for being here. You have a wonderful board and staff and you do come up with some good ideas. You heard earlier about how do we both preserve and create, you know, land trusts or other ideas for preserving the current housing? At the same time, we have a lot of, you know, new residents coming to the Borough of Manhattan. So in your testimony, you seem to be stating that you're concerned about the density, right? And you're concerned about how the, you know, the zoning is going. I just didn't know if you wanted to summarize a little bit more, maybe some of the things that you didn't mention due to time constraints.
So one other thing that I was hoping to mention is that a lot of these size-underbuilt properties contain a number of rent-stabilized units. And so those units are not accounted under the EIS. And so what we're saying is that the projections of the EIS for the potential residential displacement are being underestimated, greatly underestimated. And so what we're saying is that the EIS is...
Faulty.
Exactly.
Faulty.
And I agree. There's other ideas that we comment regarding the draft housing plan, ideas that we find that are very promising but are...
I know that I'm a big public school advocate, but I appreciate everything else you said.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Marcel.
Good evening, my name is Marcel Negret. That's Romanian, but I'm actually Colombian, anyway. The project, I'm a project manager at the Municipal Arts Society of New York. MAS has a number of concerns that we urge the city to address before we can support the East Harlem rezoning proposal. We are apprehensive about issues specific to East Harlem, including the under-accounting of available development sites, potential displacement of local residents, and lack of consideration for shadow impacts and public space needs, as well as other broader matters of long-term affordability and preservation of existing units. Due to time constraints, I will only comment on the sites excluded from the selected projected and potential development sites. But I'll be submitting a full testimony that comments on other issues.
Thank you.
The reasonable worst-case development scenario, which is the framework of the draft environmental impact statement analysis, does not accurately represent the utmost projection of potential development under the zoning proposal and could affect the accurate evaluation of its socioeconomic impacts. The rezoning has 521 multifamily residential buildings that are underbuilt based on current zoning. This brings slight concerns that the rezoning, by increasing the level of density, would put additional redevelopment pressure on these sites. DIS identifies over 100 projected and potential development sites within the reasonable worst-case development scenario. And this excludes 66% of the aforementioned underbuilt residential buildings. While there might be reasonable arguments for excluding some of these underbuilt multifamily buildings, such as lots with ongoing construction activity, the city's calculation may be underestimating future development facilitated by the rezoning. To provide an accurate analysis of potential residential displacement, MAS recommends that the final EIS be amended to include underbuilt properties with rent-stabilized units as part of the criteria for selecting development sites, or at least provide an alternate analysis that includes these properties in the reasonable worst-case development scenario. As I said, we're submitting a full version of the testimony. We're also making the maps and data sets utilized for this analysis available in our block section at MAS.org.
Okay. I have questions, I'm a questioner.
Yes.
So my question is, first of all, MAS, thank you for being here. You have a wonderful board and staff, and you do come up with some good ideas. You heard earlier about how do we both preserve and create, you know, land trusts or other ideas for preserving the current housing. At the same time, we have a lot of, you know, new residents coming to the borough of Manhattan. So in your testimony, you seem to be stating that you're concerned about the density, right? And you're concerned about how the, you know, the zoning is going. I just didn't know if you wanted to summarize a little bit more, maybe some of the things that you didn't mention due to time constraints.
So one other thing that I was hoping to mention is that a lot of these under-sized, underbuilt properties contain a number of rent-stabilized units. And so those units are not accounted under the EIS. And so what we're saying is that the projections of the EIS for the potential residential displacement are being underestimated, greatly underestimated. And so what we're saying is that the EIS is.
Faulty.
Exactly.
Faulty.
And I agree, like, there's other ideas that we comment regarding the draft housing plan, ideas that we find that are very promising, but are, as we understand, are in exploratory or pilot phases. And then these should be fast-tracked before the rezoning moves ahead. And you mentioned community land trust models, but also the expansion of legal representation. And I think most importantly, the execution of the certificate of no harassment.
That would be very important, like exists in the Clinton special district.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, that was helpful.
Ms. Reyes.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Carla Reyes, and I am, I've been a teacher here in East Harlem on 117th between First and Second for six years, public school teacher, special education. I've been the UFT chapter leader for the past two years, Go Unions. And I have to talk about public schools when we talk about rezoning, because rezoning means removal, and who are we removing? A lot of schools in East Harlem, which you probably know, in District Four, are under-enrolled because there's an overpopulation of charter schools in the area. And we're basically competing for the same kids. Now, there's no lack of students, there's like kids everywhere, right, when you're running around. But it's all under enrollment, and teachers are getting excess, which means, if you don't know, accessing, that there's no more money in the budget for teachers anymore. And a couple of special education teachers got excess at my school, which then means that they don't have jobs, and that students don't have services. And we know charter schools are not servicing students. Now, why does this matter when we talk about rezoning? Because rezoning deprioritizes our kids. That lot on 112th that now will, is sold to developers, but will no longer be for students to go, like, that hurts our kids. Chico, last year in March, for those of you who know Jefferson Houses, was shot and killed. And how many programs, how many after-school programs could save our students? If we prioritized our money there, instead of giving it to developers, so that they could then displace our people, and where are we supposed to go? This is happening all over the city. It's happening in the Bronx, it's happening in Queens, it's happening in Chinatown, it's happening everywhere. And the only way that people have ever achieved any type of change in this country has been when they united. And that's how public housing came to be in the first place, when people united and fought for it. So I invite you all to fight with us, say no, and we'll, yeah, continue the struggle for public and affordable and quality housing for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your, thank you for being a great teacher.
Gammy Alvarez can take a spot at the mic. Is it Gabby?
Yeah.
Gammy, okay. Althea York, Althea York can take a seat up there, and Andres Perez as well.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Gammy Alvarez, and I've grown up in New York City my whole life, lived here. And I've had to move around a lot because of gentrification. And I'm fighting with other young people who do not have to worry, like, hold on. I am fighting so other young people do not have to worry about where they are living. So other families, like my families, do not need to worry about where they're gonna live, don't need to worry about losing their homes. That's why I organized with the Justice Center in El Barrio. Shut up. Rezoning 96 blocks in East Harlem means displacing families within those 96 blocks. Rezoning means removal. It not only flips buildings, but flips the entire neighborhoods upside down. You think that it will make the neighborhood better and nicer with more services, but better for who? We've all seen the Pathmark closed last year, and it was one of the biggest grocery stores in El Barrio. If these so-called representatives can't even guarantee a basic food supply for the people of El Barrio after their speeches about food deserts and whatever, what should give us any confidence you will protect our places to live? We all need food, clothes, and shelter. But you've already taken our food, and now you're trying to take our shelters, trying to remove us from our homes. I'm part of the Justice Center and part of the Party for Socialism and Liberation, because I know that the way that housing rights have ever been won is when tenants and poor people, working-class people, come together and demand justice, things will change. That's the type of force that created public housing to begin with. We have to come together and reclaim our real power. Right now, the developers think they have all the power because they fund all the politicians and write the rules, but we have power too. When we change ourselves, then all these politicians are gonna either have to follow what the people want or get out of the way. Thank you very much.
Althea York.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Althea York, and I'm a member of Picture the Homeless and a former resident of East Harlem. I lived at 225 East 96th Street, and I had to leave due to an emergency in 1979, after living there 18 years. And when I came back to New York, everything has changed. The landlord, I don't know what pool he had, but his four buildings are the only one on the block still, plus the mosque. Everything around there is high-rise that we cannot afford anymore. The last time I checked, only one person that used to live in the building across from me, his apartment, was still living there. And I guess he might be going through hell right now. This was only possible because when I lived on 96th Street, was zoned for buildings much taller than areas north of it, while my street was zone R10. The street just north of mine and most of East Harlem is zoned only R7. I don't want to see what happened in Lower East Harlem happen to Upper East Harlem. Then everyone will be displaced like I am. Today, I live in the Bronx, but I want to move back to East Harlem. What has been done in East Harlem is preposterous. It's nothing about the culture, the market that we used to enjoy on weekends from 110th Street to 125th. You could get everything, clothing, food. People used to draw, come from Brooklyn, Queens, all over to go to that market. Plus, it had this restaurant on 116th Street, you could get the best pie there. None of those cultural things are there. The movie house on 113rd Street is not there anymore. What do you want the residents to do now in East Harlem? You know, so to preserve our culture of East Harlem, please vote against this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you very much, excellent testimony, thank you.
Mr. Perez.
I used to get all my chickens at La Market.
My name is Donner Perez, and I'm a member of Picture the Homes. I used to be homeless a few years back. I'm also a single parent raising a 17-year-old son. We lived at a homeless shelter for two years before I found a permanent housing on the Lower East Side. I'm asking the Board President to vote no against the rezoning with no conditions. I'm testifying today because I feel that there are a lot of families who don't have adequate funding to pay the rent that is in the market these days. They are living on fixed income such as social security, disability, or receiving public assistance. I personally receive public assistance income, not disability. We only receive $138 every two weeks towards rent, which is covers $277 per month. That is simply not enough to keep up the ransom and housing market. There should be some kind of low-income housing for families who aren't making enough to afford the cost of housing these days and this market. Through my knowledge and work for various organizations such as Picture the Homes, Banana Kelly, and Communities of Voices Heard, I've learned a lot about what a rezoning does. And under my understanding, this rezoning won't make a good thing for families who can't afford the rent, and that the rents will increase after their parents move out. Therefore, I believe that it would be a better choice to renovate housing in the community than rezoning and displacing families and individuals out of their neighborhood. I'm here because I believe this rezoning will result in more people being displaced in homeless shelters. I experienced the shelter system both before and after I had a child. I want to do everything I can do to make sure no one else has this experience. And we are continuing to allow the system to allocate for us where are we gonna go, where we're gonna live. We need to be able to allocate for ourselves. We all need to gather together, stand up and fight back against this rezoning. Instead of getting these rich developers funded to build high-rise condominiums, I would prefer that we allocate that funding to rebuild the community by building more housing, perhaps parks and gardens and lawrooms. That would be a better resource for the people in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next three witnesses, Jarque Abdallah can take a position at the mic, Vivica Diaz can have a seat, and Ray Tirado.
Go ahead. Yep, thank you.
My name is Jarque Abdallah, better known as Jermaine. I'm a member of Picture the Homeless, I'm a member of the Safety Net Activists, which is under the Urban Justice Center, and I'm also an appointed member to Community Board 11. I would like for Gail Brewer to vote no on the rezoning with no conditions, just no, which was not one of the options at the community board vote. Everyone who I heard speak at the community board was against the rezoning, even with conditions, but still it went forward, and most of the community board voted no with conditions. Saying no with conditions is like saying yes to a rezoning, but we want a few extra things with it. And this massive rezoning is not needed in East Harlem. This is not what we need because we're getting stiff. We need more low-income housing, not this elusive affordable housing that residents cannot afford and which will mean more displacement, which will mean gentrification. I think a better option would be to look into community land trusts, which have been proven in New York City as well as other states, especially when it comes to public land. We're not going to get enough apartments through this rezoning because the AMI is not for the zip code. A rezoning would also bring a lot of congestion to an area that is already congested. I had to wait for 10 minutes on the bus at a traffic light because of all the construction that is already happening on 126 between Second and Lex. The amount of construction is already a lot. With more people and more development in the neighborhood, it would just be too much, not to mention that there's not enough parking already. And you want to bring more people, more vehicles, where will people park their cars? I want to see the people who grew up here and who have been living here still have a place in East Harlem, as well as their children who are trying to move back. Basically, we don't need a rezoning, we need actual low-income housing. We can't afford these affordable rents right now, and the rezoning is not offering us enough housing for low-income residents to stay in East Harlem. Thank you.
I have a question. First of all, thank you for your service on Board 11. I was on my board, I know how much work is involved. The issue that is so challenging is how do you stop the gentrification for the private owners, which they do? And at the same time, I agree with you, try to find a way for all public land to stay in the public. So I'm just wondering, in your role on the board, have some of those discussions been discussed? How do you really preserve the land that is owned by the private sector, which is very challenging? And then, I agree with you, every public land should be done in a way that maintains it, land trust or anything else, in perpetuity for low income. So I'm just wondering, do you have some of those discussions on the community board?
None of my committees, I've never heard any of my committees actually discussing that. I'm sure some of the other ones have that I'm not on, because some of the other ones actually deal with, you know, like housing and, you know, stuff like that. But PTH has some ideas on what we can do on the community land trust and other ideas and stuff.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Vivica Diaz.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please vote no against this rezoning. I'm asking you to, please say no to this rezoning. In weighing out opportunity, please say no to this rezoning. I remember growing up and nobody would pass 96th Street. And of course, many things have changed, and now everybody wants to live uptown. And we are, I think, the area that has the most housing projects. Why we were all put in one location? That's history. But please say no to the rezoning. And I know that it's hard because people do get displaced. Families, it's like the Industrial Revolution, it didn't stop, it keeps going. And the one thing that gets affected the most are people. But it takes those people to live in those apartments or the rezoning. So again, I'm saying, please say no to the rezoning.
Thank you very much.
Ray Tirado.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Ray Tirado. I lived in this neighborhood all my life. Actually, I'm lucky and fortunate enough that I actually lived in the same apartment for 55 years. That being said, I am being pushed out. But the reason I'm here tonight is the question, who? Who benefits from this rezoning? Is it the residents? I don't think so. Who are being displaced and harassed by landlords by the week, by the month, by the year? We in the Barrio have been facing a rough situation here. This is a property that we had most of our lives and we grew up with. Now, we got, I mean, right now, we can't even get good jobs. This community is lacking in good jobs. Now, we're gonna build on public land. For me, I'm a union worker, I also represent CVH, and I also represent the Barrios. I'm wearing three hats here today. And I'm about to retire, and I would love to stay here and retire, because this is my home. But you have to say no to rezoning and build low-income housing in these public lands that is our land. We pay taxes for this, this is our land. We can't just give it away and not get nothing back. So landlords right now, they're nitpicking from the East Harlem Plan, and they're taking things that satisfies them. It doesn't satisfy the community. I've been in this visioning session for about a year and a half since it began, and I'm hearing the community, I'm hearing the Barrio. And they're saying, no, we're not, we're getting pushed out. If you think that the little scare that we had with Soha is the past history, it isn't. Once we're out of here, huh, Harlem is out the picture, Soha, here we come. So we gotta preserve our people here, we gotta build affordability. And I don't want to forget NYCHA, we need to fix NYCHA also. And with that being said, I know, I knew I was gonna run out of time, and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Not pushing me out the way everybody else does, don't want to mention the community board. But we don't want this to be like the reverse of the Robin Hood effect, where the rich is taking from the poor and giving to the rich. This is something that President 45 would be proud of. This shouldn't be the model for the Barrio. And I appreciate your time, and thank you.
And thank you for fighting for your building, too.
Sorry, we need to just come by here.
Thank you very much. Those signs are good, but I like that one over there with the eyes, just so you know.
Okay, the next three witnesses, Darlene Jackson can come up to the mic. Okay, the next three witnesses, Darlene Jackson can come up to the mic, and then Kimberly Libman and Nilsa Aranya. Arama.
Sorry, I had no idea I was going to come up this early. Oh, my goodness.
No, you're fine. You're good.
So my name is Darlene Jackson, and I'm really here to speak more about the community at large. I had, I had no clue of what community boards even, what it consists of prior to my appointment there. And I kind of felt like robbed in my civic engagement that I could have contributed 20 years in my own community. And so I'm just here to tell everyone here, to really encourage you guys, not only just come to the full board meetings, it's very important that you guys are really involved in the whole entire process of the ULP, especially the ULP process, which I'm really becoming familiar with it now myself. But there's public meetings that you can have this dialogue with. You could be, make sure the man of your voice is heard and part of the decision-making process, not just show up in your monthly meetings. And I'm actually happy to see everybody here at this public hearing, because I was like hoping like it doesn't stop at the community board level. Like, you guys need to go through all the way to city planning and the city council where they have the final vote. But I also want to talk to the panel that you really need to like, build, like more have capacity building on, on community boards and use that space as to empower the people to get, to be involved in the various issues that impact them every day. And I know you guys also offer trainings as well, but those trainings on land use specifically could be beneficial to the people who actually live and work in East Harlem as well. Okay.
We're definitely happy to take your recommendation and other ideas of other trainings that you think we should be doing. Our office has been very aggressive to not only promote trainings for community board members, but to all residents and to different bodies that we have appointments to. And the trainings include everything from land use, as you mentioned, but about landmarking as well, which is very important. And also parliamentary procedures or Robert's Rules of Order or effective resolution writing so city agencies know exactly, clearly what community boards resolve them to do. So again, we'll take your recommendation to do more trainings. And from anyone, if you feel that the 16 or 17 trainings we currently have are not enough, or we should do them more often, we will. And if there's another topic that we should be doing, we're happy to do that. We feel that capacity building at the community board level and providing the technical assistance and support is something that's critical, so we'll be happy to do that.
Where people are coming even from other boroughs for our training, so all suggestions are welcome. All right. Go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Excuse me. My name is Dr. Kimberly Libman, and I'm the Deputy Director for Prevention and Community Development at the New York Academy of Medicine. For those of you who don't know, the academy has been around since 1847, and we focus on advancing solutions to promote health for people in cities. We were appointed to the East Harlem Neighborhood Plan Steering Committee meeting, Steering Committee convened by City Council Speaker Melissa Mark Fivarito, and specifically tasked with developing recommendations around health and aging as part of the East Harlem Neighborhood Plan. In that role as Steering Committee member, we also conducted a health impact assessment to provide information about the potential health effects of the plan's affordable housing and zoning recommendations. Our HIA found that the potential for residential displacement posed a threat to the health of the East Harlem community. To prepare for today's hearing, we also reviewed the Public Health Chapter of the draft Environmental Impact Study. In our assessment, the Public Health Chapter of the draft Environmental Impact Study does not address the health impacts of changes to what are commonly known as the broader determinants of health. These are things such as education, employment, discrimination, socioeconomic status, and of course, housing. We know that residential displacement can negatively impact health. Evidence shows that displacement can cause people to accept affordable but inadequate and unhealthy, substandard, poor-quality housing. It can result in the disruption of important social support, erosion of social networks, and increased transportation costs for families. We know that some displaced residents will also become homeless, which in itself is linked to several negative health outcomes, and that the death rates for people who are homeless are several times higher than those are for the general population. Displacement can also lead to high levels of stress, which has been linked to chronic diseases, which are already quite prevalent in this neighborhood, including heart disease, hypertension, and diabetes. Regarding residential displacement, the draft Environmental Impact Statement states that under the reasonable worst-case development scenario, the proposed rezoning could displace an estimated 27 residents, which is a dramatic underestimate. To conclude, we find that the draft Environmental Impact Statement significantly underestimates the potential negative impacts, negative health impacts of the proposed rezoning to the East Harlem community, and therefore, there are unidentified needs for mitigation around these impacts, and we would suggest voting no as it stands now.
Thank you very much. We have a lot of respect for the academy.
Nilsa Arana. And if people could also, most people are testifying on the larger rezoning, but if you could say if you're testifying on the larger rezoning, or the East 111th Street rezoning, or both together, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nilsa Arama. I'm a community resident, been born and raised here for 56 years. Have lived in NYCHA. I'm also a Community Board 11 member, part of the rezoning task force as well. Just as I'm sitting here, and this is all my comments alone as a resident, I have very great concerns that the East Harlem Neighborhood Plan was that adhered to when looking at the rezoning and drawing up this proposed rezoning plan. I thought that that is not a beneficial way to look at a resource that was driven by the community, and I think that does a disservice to this community as well. There's several issues that I'm just going to bullet point, and then maybe, because I want them to go on the record, I don't have prepared remarks. I'm concerned about in this neighborhood warehoused buildings, and there is no penalties to these private owners who have held these buildings warehoused for years and years and years. With the glut and with the lack of housing in East Harlem, to have these buildings just shut it and just have commercial space, it's a crime and it's a shame, and the city has never addressed that. I believe in affordable housing. I live in one of the last Mitchell Lamas. If I didn't live there, I couldn't afford to live there. I haven't gotten a raise, as every person gets usually expects a raise every year. With economies, you're lucky you have a job, right? And so we're grateful that we're all working, but we also want to raise a family in East Harlem. If you've lived here, you've grown here, right? So affordable housing for whom? And I think that AMI, while it tries to build in some affordability, it's not nearly enough for our zip codes, right? Shelters. We have a large amount of shelters here in East Harlem. There is no housing being built for displaced people in shelters. People are traveling from boroughs to boroughs to keep their kids in the schools they've become familiar with. When they get shutted out of the shelter, they have to go somewhere else. We need our public spaces to be looked at for permanent affordability. We need landlords who will take vouchers. We need to use our money creatively so that we can create affordable housing. There are no affordable rental spaces for community-based organizations that give services to this community. The East Harlem Multi-Service Center is one of the last places where community board, or community organizations can get offices for $26 a square foot. Where do you find that in East Harlem? So I think that that is important, that we're not looking at where our community-based not-for-profits will be going. We're not developing enough programs for construction jobs. It's not enough to get someone into a level of a job entry level. We need to actually give training that will empower them to continue. We are, as part of the housing, I was the Vice Chair of Housing, we are looking at preservation and community land trust. And I am proud to say that I'm the Secretary of the East Harlem El Barrio Land Trust that is working towards creating a new model. And one last thing, because I have more, but we're not going to continue going there. It is important that we look to see how we can change the federal AMI levels. That was done at a time where it included Westchester and other areas in order to get affordability in those areas. That is no longer applicable to us. And what it's giving is it's giving a false impression that the income here is higher than it is for the, for the community residents. The Environmental Impact Statement is also incorrect. It does not count people that are doubled into apartments. To say that 27 people in this community will be displaced is obviously wrong.
Yep, I agree. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm coming not to say anything new. Gail, I respect you very much. You're one of the very few politicians I respect.
I know your name. Give the name again. I know your name.
Hilar de Jesus. Problema, la problema. And Gail, I'm just here, you know, because I don't know how many of my testimonies you've heard, but I'm here to just tell you, no, we don't want it. No with no conditions. No, 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 no. I said this at the CB 11 meeting, and I, I'm really still trying to understand what's the purpose of the board, because I hear 99 or 98, 99% of the board, people from the act that live in the community who are being affected saying no, and they don't want conditions. We're telling you no. And still, they voted no with conditions. So I don't know who they listened to. It clearly wasn't the 98% of people that came to the mic and said no with no conditions. They didn't hear me after all of my yelling and all the, you know, the problema. They didn't hear me. I've lived here all my life. I don't, we don't want it. We need to come back to the table, not a steering committee that was put together by someone who's in bed with the developers, the speaker. We didn't need that. We need the actual community to tell, we're telling you no. I'm telling you as a resident who's been here 36 years and seeing the effects on my small businesses and on my people who live, my neighbors. I'm telling you as a person who's in housing court, literally 90% of the time, fighting against the displacement that's happening, especially in the communities of color that are being rezoned. It's, it's, it's not fun. It's not fun dealing with HPD. It's not fun dealing with the judges that don't understand what's going on with these tenants. If we really want to address the problem, let's get to the root of it. You guys are keep addressing, yeah, the cure. You're forgetting the cause. The cause. Let's get to that, and then we can start addressing, you know, our housing needs. You have a large population of rent-stabilized apartments that are being jeopardized because so many landlords are greedy, and you have your Tolladons, your Crowmans, you have all of those. And that's, they hold a large stock of those rent-stabilized apartments.
So what would you do with that in terms of a preservation strategy? Whether it would be the issue like in the Clinton Special District, no harassment? What would you do? Because I am concerned about the preservation aspect.
I think we need to first, we got to, one, see how our agencies, one of the frustrations I have with HPD, especially when I'm going to court to bring a landlord to court because he doesn't think that a tenant having gas, not having gas for a year is, oh, no, we're changing the system. I don't know how HPD does a lot of these inspections, or how they, one, issue violations and how they clear them. Because I can go into an apartment, and clearly the tenant's ceiling is falling, but yet, when I go to the website, it's not, it's not reported. So let's, let's try to fix that first, the agency, and, and work and try to build tougher laws for these, against these landlords that are doing a lot of undercover things with the banks, like Signature Bank, which is one of the biggest banks that funds predatory equity. Let's address that, and then we can talk about building. And then if you really do want to build and save the crisis, start building in communities of color. I don't know why it has to be here.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
If we could ask people in the back with the signs to please lower them a bit because the cameras, the live streaming can't pick up, you're blocking the people who are testifying. Thank you. Mafusar Ramon.
So do I just submit it should look here, or?
If you have copies, you can, you can pass them up.
Yeah, I'll just take them.
Thanks. That's all right.
We're also, we can get them. Thank you.
I passed a law that says 16 and 17-year-olds can be on community boards, and here's an example. I want you to know. We're very proud of them.
Thank you, Gail. Hello, hello. Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Mafusar Rahman. Born and raised in East Harlem. I attended school here. I'm really typically wild around here, I guess. Oh, and I'm also on CB 11, on youth and education, and Vice Chair for Health. Oh, and I'm speaking for myself and on both of the projects. So I'd like to thank Ahmed Traigani and George James for helping me throughout this process. The East Harlem Neighborhood Plan was a bold concept and was developed from us in Feb, and was submitted to DCP in 2016. However, the draft ICs given to us was more or less, in my opinion, just chicken scratch as they more or less disregarded a lot of the recommendations from the community. In, I think someone mentioned earlier, but within the Public Health section, it says it would not create a significant health impact, but in fact, it will. This will create a significant health impact or even a crises in the near future. We had previously a homeless forum, and most recently a NYCHA forum happening, and throughout our process, we had collaborated with the Academy of Medicine to create the impact of gentrification health in health studies, and was one of the significant studies, one of the significant findings was that gentrification is not adequately what recognizes the public health. Local policy does not recognize health impact upon individuals in the community. Stakeholders and those in it do not consider the health impact, and more or less it would attribute to chronic stress throughout. And more, more or less.
Keep going, you're fine.
Okay, okay. Financial self-interest by the city governments and state developers is prioritized over participating strategies such as this. I would urge you, Madam President, to finesse the awesome powers as Borough President. I know recently the Sanitation Garage was given the green light for some reason, so it's really helping me think more creatively as how we can work about it. I'm not in support of the rezoning, however, since it's like 90, 90 blocks, this is significant.
Yeah, 96.
I know, I know Midtown is more or less losing it over one, one block, a few blocks, but this is significant and will adversely impact. And I would also like to call on the Borough Board of Manhattan Bronx and Queens to more or less also get involved in this process.
Why don't you just stick with Manhattan? It's okay. Thank you.
Okay. But what's it called? It's.
You got to wrap up.
The AMI levels here are not that of New York City, are not of Manhattan, and I'll just strongly encourage you, no to the rezoning, I say from DCPT. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
How are you?
Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, ma'am. Audrey, Lucille, Mr. Carlos. When you live long enough and you start getting gray like I do, you forget things, but you also live through a lifetime of changes. I remember when we fought the path mark, even though we wanted fresh products here, but we knew that the path mark came in, was going to come in. They make their profit, they lower their prices, they eliminate some of those, all the smaller supermarkets, and for 20, 30 years, they just take over the food chain. And then it gets ready for the landlords to come in and buy the big boxes of supermarket and then do high development. That happens a while back, and I was in East Harlem when that happened, and I was fighting very hard against them, which I love, and I'm going to give a little history, and I don't know when it happened, a lot of time. Alice Carnegie, who was from the East Harlem Triangle, she was, she died.
We knew Alice.
You know Alice? We fought different side of the issues, but we We fought different side of the issues, but we always did the right thing by the community. Metropolitan Hospital, they wanted to privatize it. We stopped them. When they brought Julia de Burgos and they wanted to bring homeless shelters and other programs that were not for this community, we fought for a cultural center. Avant Caribe was supposed to be one of the sites that was supposed to be developed, if I'm not mistaken, on that particular site that they're talking about. It had museums, I think it had like thirty or forty percent, if I'm not mistaken. Low income, not affordable. Nobody can afford affordable anymore. We are all a paycheck or two paycheck for being homeless. If anybody here cannot relate to that, then I'm crazy. And some of the board members, I know they work very, very hard, but some of the heads of some of the board members or some of the committees, they don't always think things through. So I would like to bring back some of this issue back to the community, to the ninety-nine percent that say no and really work out a good formula that can work. I know land use committee permits on disposition, you guys have the, you know, the right to do this. But let's not be hesitant, let's not jump the gun and keep our people more and more of a less choices of housing. The clinics, I mean, my, my, you know, in my backyard, we have more clinics than anybody else in New York City, probably, we still do. You know, we're still fighting the Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street, hanging out, you see the police cars there, we did march, we did a lot of things. I will say no, but guys, they are usually committee boards on adversary level. It's up to that vote that happens at the board president that will make the difference. Send it back home and let's get new leadership in that board and let's revisit the issue. And not stopping progress. Second Avenue subway is alive and well and is coming. And Palmon Sun never made develop or anything that we can afford in East Harlem because they want to preserve East Harlem for the people with money. So it's been orchestrated over the last twenty, twenty-five years. And I say, ma'am, with all due respect, and I'm sorry I took more time, I got other speakers who want to speak, please send it back to the people.
And thank you for your Section Three advocacy and success. I just want to add that.
By the way, the best social program is a good paying job.
Exactly.
One percent, one percent of the money that is spent in East Harlem lives in East Harlem. I mean, that stays in Harlem. In other communities, that one dollar goes ten times. So we have to create Section Three adjustment.
Thank you for Section Three.
Jose Venegas?
Hi. My name is Jose Venegas, Control Maker. I'd like to speak the truth. Let's take, um...
Use the mic.
Let's take gentrification. Gentrification goes back to Ireland when the British practiced ethnic cleansing and got rid of the Irish and they had to migrate. It caused millions of people to migrate, broke up families, and a lot of people died. The same thing has been happening here now. Those homeless shelters are modern-day concentration camps. I've been there, all over the city, right? People get murdered, they get mugged, et cetera, et cetera. I've been with Picture the Homeless. I like their, their plans. They make sense. But let's call a spade a spade, all right? These banks are out of control. The real estate industry subsidized by the taxpayers, all right? Because the city development corporation issues bonds and the city develops and the developers get that money and they develop for the rich, not the poor, all right? So calling a spade a spade, let's make things clear, all right? Stop the ethnic cleansing of the city of New York. You have any power to do it if you want to. Let's stop warehousing apartments that should be illegal. There's more apartments than people are in the streets, all right? Let's put rent control on commercial properties, all right? The data, anybody can get it. All you gotta do is walk around, be alive and think critically. And educate our students, our children to think about health, which is nowhere in the curriculum. They eat junk food all over the place, all right? And how to handle money so they can, they can understand, going back to Hamilton, how the banks have been cheating the poor.
Okay.
All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Don't forget your glasses. Thank you.
Chantal Sparks, followed by George James.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Chantal Sparks, as just stated. I am here to offer the position of CB 11. First off, I want to say that I'm a East Harlem resident, have been a resident of East Harlem for half my life. I recognize that I may look fairly young, but I'm a lot older than I seem, but I won't, I will have to deny that if I'm quoted on that. But in ser, in speaking in, in all seriousness, I am here, I served, I've served on the, for the past year on CB 11 board. I've served on the rezoning committee and also on land use committee. I am here to relay the position or to relay to Madam Borough President that the, the city's plan for the rezoning in East Harlem has left, has raised the multitude of issues for the board, which is what led to the position that the community board ultimately took. I won't list entirely the, every single concern that the community board had. We're actually submitting this as a written testimony, which I'll provide following my testimony here today. But I do want to highlight some of the recommendations that the community board made based on the concerns the community board had.
Thank you.
Some of which were a renewal of anti-displacement legal services contracts, specifically Tenant Rights Coalition. And we're asking, you know, we see an opportunity to have realistic, to implement realistic benchmarks to determine the current housing law practitioners that enable thoughtful and effective group representation in order to harmonize rhetoric with reality and combating and/or mitigating the effects of gentrification. As has been stated here by many of the East Harlem residents, there's a concern about displacement and it's a genuine concern that the East Harlem residents have. And so we see this opportunity to recommend to the city to look closely at that issue, the issue of displacement of East Harlem residents. Additionally, one of the other concerns is HPD, which was also stated before, which I won't necessarily go into, I won't reiterate, but it's definitely a concern as well as one of the main, main issues is the, the need to use public land for the public, for the residents of East Harlem and to ensure that public land is a hundred percent affordable to those residents who actually reside in East Harlem, which include residents at the very, very low spectrum of, of the income bands. So again, the concerns raised by the city's proposal led to the, the board's recommendation and we will be submitting written testimony about those specific recommendations that we have, so in hopes that your office and ultimately the city council will vote in, in the way the community wishes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is George James. I'm a planner. I've worked with Community Board 11 over the years, but tonight I'm here speaking for myself. Fundamental to good planning is understanding both the costs and the benefits of a rezoning action like this. The environmental impact statement doesn't do a good job of that, largely because we are underestimating, I believe, we are underestimating the amount of growth that will happen because of the rezoning in three fundamental ways. First, we estimate new development sites. When we estimate it in EIS, we are ignoring rent stabilized buildings. We are ignoring houses of worship. We are ignoring sales of air rights. Now, you know, Borough President, that development in New York often involves one of these three, if not, if not more than one. Yet in the East Harlem rezoning, we're saying if you're one of those three things, you will not be redeveloped. And that is a fundamental underestimating of the, the reasonable worst-case scenario. Second, as I've stated repeatedly, the multipliers used for student generation are now seventeen years old in the manual. If we just plug in correct multipliers and use the reasonable worst-case development scenario, we would disclose significant impacts on District Four elementary schools, which are not in the EIS. Finally, there are many URB actions occurring in the district. Hundred Twenty-Sixth Street, National Black Theater, Lexington Gardens, Ninety-Sixth Street, in addition to this rezoning. By breaking them up into smaller chunks, we are segmenting the impacts so that if they were evaluated together, they would be significant, but individually, they are not. Taken together, we could be seriously underestimating the impacts of the rezoning. Now, the Borough Presidents, amongst others, included comments on the draft scope of work that could have addressed some of these issues, but these comments were largely ignored. We could have done a much better job of assessing the impacts of the rezoning, but the Department of City Planning chose not to do so, which was unfortunate and ironic. And just for the record, I don't take a position on the rezoning. I just advocating for better planning.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, George, very much.
The next, Salome León, Sandra Cruz, Kathy Pina, and Josefina Salazar. And I believe we have, they're going to be accompanied by translators.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Salome León. Represento Movimiento por Justicia del Barrio. Nosotros somos el pueblo humilde del barrio. Nosotros somos la comunidad de bajos ingresos del este de Harlem. Nosotros somos los inquilinos de largo término y de renta estabilizada. Nosotros como comunidad del este de Harlem, incondicionalmente, rechazamos incondicionalmente el plan de rezonificación del alcalde de Blasio. Y estamos aquí para pedirle a usted, Gail Brewer, como presidenta del Condado de Manhattan, que haga lo mismo recomendando que el plan destructivo del alcalde de Blasio sea completamente desechado. Una recomendación su, una recomendación suyo de no con condiciones. Tampoco es aceptable porque es esencialmente una aprobación a cambio de algunos cambios cosméticos. Nosotros rechazamos el plan de vivienda lujosa del alcalde. Como hemos dicho antes, nosotros no queremos ninguna parte de su plan. Nosotros no queremos estacionamientos de carros o parques a cambio de este plan de vivienda lujosa. Nosotros no, no queremos ninguna migaja. Hay otros que están dispuestos a aceptar migajas a cambio del plan de vivienda, pero nosotros somos muy diferentes. La administración del alcalde de Blasio, incluyendo su departamento de planificación de la ciudad, y HPD, mienten. La administración del alcalde de Blasio quiere excluir a las voces que representan el sector de nuestra comunidad, que representamos. Igualmente usted, Gail Brewer, también nos ha excluido. Nosotros le hemos llamado y escrito a usted desde el dos mil quince para hablar sobre el plan de rezonificación del alcalde, pero usted nunca nos ha respondido. Usted igual que el alcalde quiere excluirnos a los más pobres del este de Harlem. Ustedes igual que el alcalde quieren excluir a las mujeres, hombres, ancianos, niñas y niños, que seríamos los más perjudicados por el plan de vivienda lujosa del alcalde de Blasio. El alcalde dice que es un plan de vivienda de bajos ingresos, pero nosotros sabemos que eso no es verdad porque la gran mayoría de los apartamentos será designada para gente rica. Estamos en contra del plan de vivienda lujosa del alcalde porque es un plan que favorece a los grandes, a las grandes compañías y caseros ricos y no a la gente sencilla y humilde que vive en nuestro querido barrio. Es por eso que Regni apoya el plan de vivienda lujosa del alcalde. En lugar de imponer su plan de vivienda lujosa, el alcalde debería hacer algo para preservar la vivienda de apartamentos de renta estabilizada que ya existe y en donde mucha gente pobre vive actualmente, pero que día tras día estamos a riesgo de ser desplazados porque los malos caseros no hacen reparos porque quieren desplazarnos. Aparte de eso, el departamento de vivienda HPD del alcalde de Blasio fallan en forzar las leyes de vivienda para que estos malos caseros cumplan con esas leyes. Nosotros como inquilinos de vivienda de renta estabilizada hemos leído el plan de vivienda del este de Harlem que, que el departamento de vivienda de la ciudad HPD ha publicado recientemente y es claro que ese plan no hará nada efectivamente para asegurar que la vivienda de bajos ingresos que existe actualmente siga existiendo. Si el plan de vivienda lujosa del alcalde se convierte en ley, es más, ese nuevo plan H, de HPD favorece a los caseros y no a nosotros, los inquilinos. Si en realidad quisiera la administración del alcalde de Blasio preservar la vivienda de bajos ingresos que existe actualmente, implementaría nuestro plan de diez puntos. Como comunidad residentes del este de Harlem, nos reunimos a través de nuestra consulta del barrio, consultas comunitarias a lo largo de un año y durante este proceso, los residentes del este de Harlem dijeron claramente que incondicionalmente rechazamos el plan de rezonificación que quiere imponer el alcalde de Blasio. También fue en estas reuniones comunitarias que nuestra comunidad hizo nuestro plan de diez puntos para la administración de Blasio, para preservar la renta estabilizada. Nosotros exigimos que el plan de vivienda lujosa, el plan de rezonificación del alcalde de Blasio sea cien por ciento y completamente desechado y después de eso reemplazado por el plan de diez puntos que fue hecho por los residentes del este de Harlem. El barrio no se vende!
Se ama y se defiende!
El barrio no se vende!
Se ama y se defiende!
El barrio no se vende!
Se ama y se defiende!
El barrio no se vende!
Se ama y se defiende!
Okay. El barrio no se vende!
Se ama y se defiende!
El barrio no se vende!
Se ama y se defiende!
All right. El barrio no se vende!
Se ama y se defiende!
Thank you. Thank you very much. Go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brianna. I'm going to be translating what she said.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Salome León and I represent Movement for Justice in El Barrio. We are the humble people of El Barrio. We are the low-income committee of East Harlem. We are the long-term rent stabilized tenants in East Harlem. We, as the committee of the East Harlem that we are, are unconditionally against the mayor's rezoning plan and we are here tonight to ask you, Madam Borough President Gail Brewer, to take the same position by recommending unconditionally that the mayor's destructive plan be entirely scrapped. A no for vote with, with conditions is not acceptable because that is exceptionally an approval in exchange of something cosmetic changes. We are opposed to his luxury housing plan. As we have said before, we do not want any of this, his displacement plan. We also do not want parking lots or parks in exchange for his luxury housing plan. We do not want any crumbs. There are others that are willing to accept crumbs in exchange of the mayor's luxury house, housing plan, but we are the very, but we are very different. The administration of Mayor de Blasio, including his Department of City Plan and HPD lies. Mayor de Blasio wants to exclude the voices of the sectors of the community that we, the most humble, represent. You, Gail, have excluded us. We have called you and written, written to you since two thousand and fifteen to discuss the mayor's rezoning plan, but you have never responded to us. You, like the mayor, want to exclude the most impoverished of El Barrio. You, like the mayor, want to exclude us, the women, men, elderly, girls, and boys that would be the most impacted by Mayor de Blasio's luxury housing plan. The mayor says that isn't an affordable housing plan, but we know that that's a lie because the great majority of the apartment units will be designated for the rich people. We are a hundred percent against the mayor's luxury housing plan because it's a plan that favors big developers and rich landlords. His plan in no way favors the simple and humble people that live in our beloved Barrio. That is why the REBNY, the Real Estate Board of New York, supports the mayor's luxury housing plan. Instead of imposing his luxury housing plan, the mayor should do something to preserve the rent stabilized housing that already exists and where many poor people currently live because it, because after day after day, we are... live, because they, because after day after day, we are at risk of being disabled, displaced, I'm so sorry, because the bad landlords' tenants do not make repairs with the objective of displacing us. Mayor de Blasio's Department of Housing fails to enforce the housing laws to ensure that these bad landlords comply with the city's housing laws. We, tenants of rent-stabilized housing, have read the HPD's newly released East Harlem housing plan, and it's clear that the plan will not, will not do nothing effective to ensure that the low-income housing that currently exists will continue to exist if Mayor de Blasio's luxury housing plan is approved. Furthermore, the new HPD plan benefits the landlords and not us, the tenants. If Mayor de Blasio truly wants to preserve the low-income housing that currently exists, we would implement our ten-point plan. As a community, we, the residents of East Harlem, hold public community meetings as part of our community-driven consultations process, which lasts a year. Throughout this community consultation, East Harlem residents made clear that they are unconditionally against the plan that the mayor wants to impose. It was also throughout this community-wide meetings that the community developed our ten-point plan for the de Blasio administration to preserve rent-stabilized housing. We demand that the mayor's luxury housing plan, otherwise known as his rezoning plan, be 100% scrapped and after this, after that, replaced with our ten-point plan that we developed by East Harlem residents. El barrio is not for sale, it's to be loved and defended. El barrio is not for sale, it's loved and defended. El barrio is not for sale, it's to be loved and defended. El barrio is not for sale, it's to be loved and defended. El barrio is not for sale, it's to be loved and defended.
Thank, thank you very much, and let me just say one thing, I didn't know you'd ask to meet with us, I meet with everybody, people know that, so be glad to meet with you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Sandra Cruz, yo soy de miembro de Justicia por Movimiento del Barrio. Nosotros queremos que el plan de rezonificación del alcalde sea completamente desechado y reemplazado en su lugar con nuestro plan de diez puntos. Queremos ser claros, no estamos dispuestos a aceptar el plan de rezonificación, a cambio de nuestro plan de diez puntos, y por eso queremos que ustedes voten cien por ciento en contra del plan de rezonificación, sin ninguna condición. Yo le voy a presentar el resumen de nuestro plan de diez puntos para la administración del alcalde de Blasio. El plan se le ha enviado, enviado a usted, Gail Brewer, pidiéndole que se comunicara con nosotros para hablar sobre esto, pero usted nos ignoró. Uno, que establezcan supervisión y dependiente que vigile a HPD para toda la ciudad de Nueva York. Dos, establecer un nuevo programa de educación pública para que todos los inquilinos en la ciudad de Nueva York se den cuenta sobre la responsabilidad de HPD de asegurar los caseros cumplan con las leyes de vivienda de mantenimiento. Tres, caseros deben ser castigados inmediatamente cuando violan la ley en lugar de, que duren meses en la corte. Mientras los inquilinos sufren las condiciones pésimas, estos caseros deben de recibir una multa inmediatamente por medio de un tribunal administrativo o por medio de inspectores que tengan un poder de dar multas por violaciones repetidas. Cuatro, cumplir con la responsabilidad de programas de reparos, de emergencia de HPD todos los caseros, no solamente en vez en cuando, cuando los inquilinos se organizan para exigir justicia, presionando a HPD exponiéndolos ante los medios de comunicación para que hagan su trabajo. Cinco, mejorar en proveer materiales en los idiomas necesarios para que los inquilinos, quienes reciban inspecciones. Seis, para todas las emergencias inmediatas, especialmente cuando no tengamos calefacción y agua caliente en el invierno, frío, HPD debe de cambiar cómo responde. Inspeccionar reparos y multas debe todo ser dado en 24 horas y no hacer que los inquilinos tengan que esperar semanas o meses como ocurre actualmente. Siete, establecer un programa para justicia de vivienda del estado, del este de Harlem para la supervisión de HPD, que puede ser replicado en otras comunidades de bajos ingresos con problemas serios de vivienda. Ocho, establecer supervisión de trabajo de HPD hecho por la comunidad del, de Harlem. Nueve, mejorar el proceso de, hacer inspecciones, por ejemplo, que proueban inspecciones las 24 horas del día, siete días a la semana, asegurar citas por adelantado para todas las inspecciones. Diez, mejorar el seguimiento garantizado que, de HPD. Llame a los inquilinos para averiguar si las violaciones han sido reparadas, and esto es todo.
Thank you very much. You again.
I am. Good evening, my name is Sandra Cruz, and I am member of the Movement for Justice in El Barrio. We want the mayor's rezoning plan completely scrapped, and in its place, we want our ten-point plan implemented. We want to be clear that we will not accept the rezoning plan in exchange for our ten-point plan. This is the reason we want you to vote 100% against the rezoning plan without any conditions. Now, I will, I will present a brief summary of our ten-point plan for the de Blasio's administration. This plan was sent to you, Gail Brewer, we asked that you contact us to discuss it, but you ignored us. Number one, provide true independent citywide oversight of HPD's performance. It, it is of the highest importance that enforcement mechanisms are put into place to ensure HPD's execution of these recommendations and their regulation duties. Two, mount a citywide public education initiative so that all tenants in New York City are aware of the HPD's responsibility to ensure, ensure that landlords comply with the housing law. Landlords must be punished immediately when they break the law instead of dragging it out in, in court for months and months while tenants suffer. These landlords should be fined immediately, either in an administrative tribunal or via inspectors who can ticket them on the spot of the repeated violation. Comply with the responsibilities of HPD's emergency repair program in all cases, not just occasionally or when HPD is embarrassed into action when tenants call the press and demand justice. Five, improve the quality of language access for tenants receiving inspections. Six, for all immediate emergencies, especially when we are without heat and hot water in the cold winter months, HPD should improve how they respond. Inspectors, repair, and fine will be, will, should all be given within 24 hours of a violation instead of making tenants wait for weeks or months, as often happens. Seven, establish an East Harlem HPD housing justice program to oversee HPD that can serve as a pilot program to replicate in other low-income areas with serious housing problems. Eight, establish community-based oversight of HPD's performance in East Harlem. Nine, improve the inspection process. For example, provide inspections 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and suit that appointments are given in advance of inspection. Ten, improve follow-up. Guarantee HPD callbacks to tenants to find out if violations have been repaired. That is all.
Thank you very much, and like I said, we'd be glad to meet, I didn't know.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Josefina Salazar, y soy miembro de Movimiento por Justicia del Barrio. Nuestra organización está compuesta de inquilinos que vivimos en el este de Harlem, y luchamos por vivienda digna y en contra del desplazamiento. Nosotros, el pueblo humilde del barrio, estamos aquí esta noche en defensa de nuestra querida comunidad. Nosotros estamos 100% e incondicionalmente en contra del plan de vivienda lujosa del alcalde de Blasio. El alcalde del Departamento de Planificación de la Ciudad de HPD, la concejal Malviverito, y usted, este, Gail Brewer, quieren excluir las voces del sector de la comunidad que nosotros, los más humildes, representamos. Ustedes lo único que buscan es imponer sus planes de rezonificación, es decir, sus planes de desplazamiento. A usted, Gail Brewer, le hemos entregado el plan de diez puntos, le hemos escrito y llamado varias veces, y usted nunca nos ha respondido. Nosotros tenemos, este, le hemos, este, llamado y tenemos pruebas de que le hemos mandado a escribir y nunca nos ha contestado. Nosotros no nos puede engañar, sabemos muy bien el papel de usted en seleccionar a los integrantes de la Junta Comunitaria 11. Esta gente que usted seleccionó no nos representa. Como lacayos políticos que son, esta gente del mes pasado votaron uno con condicion, con condiciones. Uno con condiciones es esencialmente un voto a favor de la rezonificación a cambio de migajas. Nosotros, los residentes del este de Harlem de largo término y de renta estabilizada, pide el plan de rezonificación del alcalde que sea 100% desechado. Al parecer, la única meta de usted, Gail Brewer, es aparentar falsamente que usted escucha al pueblo del barrio, para que al final de cuentas haga su reconocimiento a favor de la rezonificación del este de Harlem con una recomendación de uno con condiciones. Una vez, le queremos recalcar que exigimos que por primera vez no siga usted excluyendo a los residentes del este de Harlem de largo término y de renta estabilizada. Muéstrenos usted que está dispuesta a cambiar de modo de ser y que escuche y respete al pueblo del este de Harlem con su plan, plan de recomendación incondicionalmente al 100% en contra del rezonificación del alcalde. Queremos un firme no. 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 Queremos un firme no.
Thank you very much.
I'm back.
You're back.
I'm back.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Josefina Salazar, and I am member of Movement for Justice in El Barrio. Our organization consists of East Harlem tenants, and we fight for dignified housing and against displacement. We, the humble people of East Harlem, are here tonight in defense of our beloved community. We are 100% and unconditionally against Mayor de Blasio's entire luxury housing plan. The mayor, his Department of City Planning, HPD, council member Melissa Mark-Vividiel, and you, Gail Brewer, want to exclude the voices of the sectors of the community that we, the most humble, represent. The only thing we, you all seek is to impose our rezoning plans. In other words, you wish to impose our displacement plans. We have, we have sent you, Gail, our ten-point plan, we have written, written to you and called you several times, and you have never responded, and that way, you have excluded us. You cannot deceive us, you cannot deceive us. We know of your role in selecting the members of Community Board 11. Those people that you have chosen do not represent us. As the political lackeys that we are, those people last month voted no with conditions. A vote of no with conditions is not acceptable, because that is essentially a yes vote in exchange for crumbs. We, the long-term rent-stabilized residents of East Harlem, ask that the mayor's rezoning plan be 100% scrapped. Apparently, your main objective, Gail Brewer, is to falsely appear as if you listen to the people of El Barrio and then make your recommendations in support of the rezoning of East Harlem by making a recommendation of no with conditions. Once more, we reiterate that we demand that for the first time, you do not exclude long-term rent-stabilized East Harlem tenants. Show us that you listen and respect the people of El Barrio by recommending unconditionally a 100% firm no against the mayor's rezoning plan. We want a firm no vote. 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 We want a firm no vote.
Thank, thank, thank you very much, and I do want to say that the issue of the Community Board 11, a lot of folks work really hard on that board. We have about 100 people applying, people should apply for next year. We take that application very seriously, I just want to say.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Kathy, y soy miembro de Movimiento por Justicia del Barrio. Yo le voy a explicar algunas de las razones de por qué los residentes de largo terminó de renta estabilizada de este de Harlem. Estamos en contra del plan de rezonificación. El alcalde quiere imponer su plan de vivienda lujosa que causará nuestro desplazamiento de nuestro querido barrio. El plan de rezonificación del alcalde va a ser que los caseros nos presionen aún más, ya que van a caer más ganancias, lo que, cual va a causar el desplazamiento secundario de inquilinos con renta estabilizada y bajos recursos. Nosotros, las personas de bajos recursos del barrio, no pod, no podremos pagar los apartamentos que van a ser construidos bajo el plan del alcalde, ni las unidades de 75 a 80% del costo del mercado, que son la gran mayoría, ni las 20 a 25% ya más unidades asequibles, porque serán para las personas que ganan mucho más dinero que nosotros. Cuando el mercado se hunda con miles de nuevos apartamentos de lujo del alcalde, esto causa aumentos rápidos del alquiler en el este de Harlem, desplazando potencialmente a largo plazo a los residentes de bajo ingresos de unidades estabilizadas, a igual que lo que sucedió en el rezonamiento de otros vecindarios como Chelsea y Williamsburg. Si este plan se promulga, nuestros negocios locales y vendedores ambulantes serán desplazados y trabajadores perderán su sustento ya que los nuevos inquilinos de lujo demandan tiendas y amenidades de lujo. Ya no vamos a poder comprar en nuestros, en nuestras tiendas de nuestra comunidad. El plan del alcalde va a destruir a las bellas culturas que hacen que este de Harlem sea el barrio, reemplazándola con una corto de dinero. Nosotros exigimos que usted nos escuche y haga los, que los residentes de este de Harlem piden. Por eso estamos aquí, para pedirle que su recomendación sea 100% y sin condiciones en contra del plan de rezonificación del alcalde. Una recomendación de no con condiciones tampoco sería aceptable, porque sería rezonificación a cambio de algunos cambios cosméticos. Queremos que este plan destructivo sea completamente desechado. Continuamos luchando por nuestra querida comunidad, porque el barrio no se vende, se ama y se defiende. El barrio no se vende, se ama y se defiende. El barrio no se vende, se ama y se defiende. El barrio no se vende, se ama y se defiende.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Kathy, and I am member of Movement for Justice in El Barrio. I'm going to explain to you, I'm going to explain to you some of the reasons why East Harlem long-term resident, stabilized residents are against the rezoning plan. The mayor wants to impose his luxury housing plan, which will cause our displacement for our, our beloved barrio. Our greedy landlords already used illegally and underhanded means to try to displace us. They're rent-stabilized tenants and permanently remove our homes from the roles of rent stabilization with the mayor's massive up-zoning plan. The pressures, pressure will drastically increase because landlords will make to rank and even, even more profits, leading to secondary displacement of long-term, low-income rent-stabilized tenants. We, the low-income people of El Barrio, cannot afford any of the new apartments that will be built under the mayor's plan. Neither the 75% to 80% market rate units, which are the vast majority, nor the 20%, 25% so-called affordable units for people who make more money than us. We, the market is, when the market is flooded with the mayor's thousands of new luxury units, this will cause rapid rent increases in East Harlem, potentially displacing long-term low-income residents for our rent-stabilized units, just like what happened in the rezoning of other hot markets like Chelsea and Williamsburg. If this plan is enacted, our local businesses and street vendors will be displaced and workers will lose their livelihood as new luxury tenants demand luxury stores and elements. We will, we will not be able to afford shops at our stores in our community. The mayor's plan will destroy the beautiful cultures that make East Harlem be El Barrio, by replacing it with a culture of money. We demand that you listen to us by doing what East Harlem residents want. That is why we are here to ask that, that your recommendation be 100% and unconditionally against the mayor's rezoning plan. A recommendation of no with conditions is also not acceptable, because that is essentially a recommendation in search of support of rezoning in exchange of, exchange for cosmetic change, cosmetic changes. We will continue fighting for our beloved community because El Barrio is not for sale, is to be loved and defended. El barrio is not for sale, is to be loved and defended. El barrio is not for sale, is to be loved and defended. El barrio is not for sale, is to be loved and defended.
Thank, thank you very much.
One more thing, that we have sent you letters and emails and all that, and we haven't responded back, so...
We will follow up. I didn't get it to some niche, but we will make sure to get back to you tomorrow.
Okay, it's fine, we could have you, we have proof, just in case if you need any proof. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
We've been here since November 2015, Gail.
Okay, I didn't know about it.
We've been here, we've called your office, we've asked for you.
We will follow up tomorrow. We will follow up tomorrow.
We sent you another letter on Monday.
Okay, we will follow up tomorrow.
Okay, please don't act like you welcome the people of El Barrio.
We will.
You haven't.
We will.
We've been here two years, Gail.
We will follow.
Why do we have to wait two years?
I did not get this material, I will follow up tomorrow.
You never have invited us to any of your rezoning meetings.
We, we haven't had a rezoning meeting, this is the first one. Alright, let's stop, let's stop, let's stop. Who's the next speaker? You're very welcome.
We have one more speaker.
Tenemos, tenemos que oír a una persona más que tiene oposición.
Please give the last speaker the same courtesy you were given.
Tenemos otro vecino que también quiere hablar sobre la oposición al plan de resonificación. No, barrio también de ello a los vecinos, por favor. Por favor, no me diga el último vecino que quiere hablar.
There's another, Lydia Valdez. Hold on one second. Lydia Valdez. Lydia, Lydia Valdez would like to speak. Lydia. Hold on, what? There's a woman who would like to speak. Lydia, is Lydia Valdez here?
Is there Lydia Valdez? Lydia Valdez in the audience.
She would like to speak.
Can we hear, can we hear from another neighbor that wants to speak as well on the rezonification?
Hi, I just want to address the audience, you know. As a child, I remember politicians respected us, the voters. We don't need to beg politicians, we are their boss. You elected them. So you know something? Stop re-electing people that are not doing anything for us, that's all I have to say.
I want to just say, there are no more speakers. If you, I just want to say, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and I, we're taking this very seriously. We have no more speakers, but we will take very seriously what you said. Thank you very much and good night, thank you. You're welcome to participate, ask us any questions, thank you.